Welcome to the Mayor and Council Regular Session, June 20th. And this meeting is now called to order. First, we will have invocation given by Councilmember Schindler. Right after that, following the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
Dear Lord, we gather here today as representatives of the City of Hagerstown, united in our shared purpose to serve and uplift our community. As we convene this meeting, let us take a moment to reflect on the responsibility entrusted to us. May we approach our deliberations with open minds, seeking common ground and best interests of our fellow citizens. Let us embrace diversity and thought, of thought and perspective, knowing that it's through respectful dialogue that we can uncover innovative solutions to the challenges before us. Let us remember that our positions carry the weight of trust, and our actions should always reflect the highest standards of integrity. With gratitude for the opportunity to serve, let us begin this council meeting, knowing that our collective efforts can shape a brighter future for Hagerstown. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rules of procedure: Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for July is Tuesday, July 4th, no meeting scheduled. Tuesday, July 11th, work session at 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, July 18th, work session at 4:00 p.m. And then Tuesday, July 25th, will be our regular session at 7:00 p.m. And tonight, we have an appointment, and we're swearing in Mr. Robert Powell. Would you please show me up front?
I need to get the appointment made first.
Thank you.
Make the motion.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, hereby move that we appoint to the Historic District Commission William Doug Carroll, term to expire on June 30th, 2026, and Robert Powell, term to expire on July 30th, I'm sorry, 2026.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Have you guys swear your name?
No, Mr. Powell, I didn't swear your name, I'm sorry.
We're not finished yet.
Go backwards.
You must be clear.
Right.
Quite that quick.
We'll get it the next time.
Shoot it.
Yes. You ready?
Yep.
All right. I, Robert Powell.
I, Robert Powell.
Do swear?
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
Bear true allegiance?
Bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And the charter and ordinances?
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Hagerstown?
Of the City of Hagerstown.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of?
Execute the office of?
Board of Commissioners, Hagerstown Historic District Commission.
Board of Commissioners, Hagerstown Historic District Commission.
Woo, you're ready. According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state?
And laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Start your name.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. She just going to run into?
Get the Planning Commission. Madam Mayor, hereby move to appoint to the Planning Commission Jane Stone, with term to expire June 30th, 2028, and Judy Wheeler, her terms expire July 31st, 2028.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, a proclamation for Pride Month. Okay. Chief likes my bloopers. How you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
Oh, good. I have some pins for you right here. Take them. All right, so a proclamation for Pride Month, June 2023. Whereas, June 2023 marks the 54th annual celebration throughout the United States of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, LGBTBI, Pride Month. And whereas, the month of June was chosen to commemorate the dedication and bravery of those who led the 1969 uprising at the Stonewall Tavern in Greenwich Village, which sparked the modern LGTBQI liberation movement. And whereas, the City of Hagerstown believes in working together with all members of our community to facilitate open relationships, providing safe, dignity, and welcoming environment for our residents and visitors. And whereas, celebrations such as parades, parties, rallies, marches, picnics, workshops, and concerts will attract millions of participants from around the world. Now therefore, I, Tequisha Martinez, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim and recognize June 2023 Pride Month. I encourage those in our city to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists and to celebrate the great diversity of the American people. Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. While you were reading that, I got very emotional because I was born and raised here in Hagerstown. And growing up, it was not always easy living in this city for an individual of our community. And over the past 10 years, I've seen a huge change. And I thank you and the council for recognizing Pride Month. And I also want to recognize our former mayor, Keller, for all of her work that she's done with Hagerstown Hope. There's a lot that has been challenged across the country and across the world. And it's nice to live in a state, and specifically a city, where we feel safe to reside. And a state where we are able to marry those individuals that we love. I've been married now for seven years. Since 2016, I was married here in Hagerstown to my partner of 30 years. So there's nothing, when it comes to Pride Month and when it comes to being a member of our community, it has nothing to do with our sexuality. It has everything to do with us wanting to be able to love the individuals that we're with. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all ready? Y'all ready?
Yes, we are. Thank you for asking.
This is you.
One, two, three, and one, two, three.
What's next? So we have Citizen Comments. And first, we have Ms. Kathy Santiago. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please? And you have five minutes, three minutes.
You timing me?
Yes.
Okay. Kathy Santiago, 323 Bethune Avenue, Hagerstown, Maryland 21740. Many of you know me. I'm a resident of Bethel Gardens, but I'm also the property manager. And we've been having some major issues down there. And we have, we've been working closely with the police, of course. But five years ago, we tried to get the city to sell us back our streets. We would have gated it because we had the funding. Well, the ship has sailed. We don't have the funding to do that anymore. We had talked about closing off one of the streets to make, I guess, so they could, so there's more, only one way in and one way out. Now there's two ways in. We get a lot of foot traffic. We get people to hang out all hours of the night, laughing, carrying on, playing music. We call the police. They don't move. And something has to be done. I mean, if it's an issue with my residents, I will deal with my residents. But it's not an issue with my residents. It's an issue with outside people coming in. So basically, I don't, I don't know what else to do. I come out of my office during working hours. I don't have that luxury to do it a lot. But I do come out, and I will run them off. And I've been cussed at, threatened, and the whole nine yards. And I don't care because I worry about my residents. I have senior citizens. I have disabled. I have handicapped. I have kids. And I know I have some residents that are indulging, and I will deal with them when the time comes. But something has to be done. And I don't, I'm at my wit's end. We've done everything that we know to do. We did the security cameras back in 98 or whenever it was we got the grant. Then the police took it over. We built a substation for the community officers. They don't use it because they don't have a lot of staff. We've done everything that we can do. We put lights up. We put fencing up. We've done security. I don't know what else to do. So I need you guys to advise me. Tell me what I can do. Tell me what I need to do. And if you can help in any way, that would be great. But it seems like we are the dumping ground because you can't see us from Jonathan Street. You can't see inside from North Avenue, North Street. So we are the dumping ground. They come in, they stand on the side of Building 6, where I can't see them. And they stand there. And I can say that every time I shoot a text to the police department, they respond. So I'm not complaining about the police. But something more has to be done. I have to protect my residents, the ones that are seniors. I have a 95-year-old lady that lives there. She doesn't deserve this. They don't deserve to be woke up at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 because kids want to sit outside, young adults, and play music loud and talk and carry on. It's just, it's unacceptable. And I always tell them to take it to their mother's house or their grandmother's house, but don't bring it on my property. So whatever you guys come up with, with all your heads put together, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Mary Spencer. Would you please state your name and address for the record? I was going to call you what I know you as, but I'm not going to.
My name's Mary Spencer, and I live at 314 Henry Avenue. And they, my name is Pickles on the street. That's what they call me. I'm concerned about Bethel Gardens, and I'm concerned about Jonathan Street, coming up Jonathan Street. Because the way that street looks, it didn't used to look like that. And I just want to know what, what we can do about it. So, the drugs and all that stuff. Murph Avenue is the worstest. Henry was bad, but they kind of cleaned that up because the manager got rid of some of the problem. But it ain't the people that live there. Like the manager said, it's the people that don't live there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pickles.
Next up, we have Mr. Jerry Pryor. Would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Jerry Pryor, 313 A, Jonathan Street. And as far as what they're saying, he's way, they're being nice about it, put it that way. Like, I've had to run a person off of her porch, her deck. He was passed out under her deck, off a dope. Had to end up into a physical altercation with people multiple times. Police have called. I had to chase a person down the street with a baseball bat. By the time they get there, these people are long gone. And it's like, when they come to stop, you know, to speak to us, it's more of an attitude instead of, you know, being on the job or being respectful about doing their job. And they need a bigger presence down there, period. I understand they have a drone program and all that. But without somebody there to actually police the situation, it's nothing's ever going to change. It's not going to change because they don't care. 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning, I can sit on my couch and watch any and everything go on and go by and watch the cops ride right on by. And they'll still be sitting there and watch the cops ride right on back by again. And they'll still be there. Sometimes you catch one or two, get out and speak or say something. But they're not running anyone off. They don't live on the property. I'm not allowed to hang out at 11:00, 12:00, 1:00 in the morning in my own neighborhood and party and do things that they don't, and they don't live there. Why should they be allowed to do the same thing? You know, there should be a bigger presence, period. That's how I feel. And the police is the only way it's going to help that. They got to do something. That subway station they got down there, they need a presence in there automatically. There should be somebody in there all the time. Just that alone is going to stop them from being able to at least hang down on that corner right there. They're right there where the police should be at every day, just chilling, doing whatever they're doing. Nobody's doing nothing about it. I'm in physical altercations almost every other day. If you watch your cameras, you'll see me in a physical altercation, chasing somebody away. They done passed out under her deck. There was a two, three, a girl, a female, I mean, excuse me, a male and his girlfriend sitting Indian-style in front of her house, shooting up dope. The police were called, and they came and literally let them people walk off. Because they're in a program, some Washington County program, that they're giving needles out to people. They're giving them 90% of the job. They don't need to do nothing. Find, all the dope is on the street. They give them the needle to do that, and they just sit there and lock them up and nothing. Just let them walk on off. But then when the guy gets smart with me, the cop gets mad with me for saying something to the dude. If they're not going to do it, then who else is going to do it? I can't police a situation. The police should be able to be here to do it. You know what I'm saying? That's how I feel. I mean, no disrespect to nobody, you know, I just, it should be done. Something needs to be taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Cherie Yarborough? Yep, Yarborough. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? You have three minutes.
Cherie Yarborough, 53 Murph Avenue, Hagerstown, 21740. I actually live on Murph, and I've literally seen two people get their heads blown off on this property. I've never seen anything like this before. We're confused as to why they get to hang out there and all the other income-based properties don't have these issues. So we feel like no one cares about us. Because every time, I called the police five times on Saturday. Five times because of the noise. They're shooting fireworks. We've had altercations last week where a guy threatened to kill somebody. I have grandkids. I have kids. I don't want us to be walking down my steps and get shot because nobody cares what goes on. And I don't, I'm not saying you don't. That's how we feel. We feel like no one cares about us down there. We need something to be done. The law, she got signs up, no trespassing, no loitering, and nobody honors it. The police don't honor it. I've seen some female cops come down there and actually make fun of us. You know, they'd be making little, what they call ghetto comments. You know, I think that's inappropriate. You're a professional. I've actually seen this happen. So I think that if we don't come together as a community, it's going to be a lot of more lives lost. I've seen guys digging in their rear ends, pulling out drugs. I've seen this with my own eyes. Something has got to be done. I don't know why we're overlooked down there. But we need help. And if we don't get help, it's going to be a lot of more lives lost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Emily Keller. Please state your address, your name and address for the record, as if you don't know. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hang on, let me get the clocks, don't you?
I'm Emily Keller. I live at 851 Summit Avenue. I am actually here tonight on behalf of Victoria Sterling, the Director of Behavioral Health in Washington Goes Purple. So several of you were at the kickoff last September. We had a guest speaker. His name was Stephen Hill. He is a person in recovery and author. He has a heck of a story. And while he was here, he filmed a documentary. And it is going to premiere in July. It's going to be on Google Play, Amazon, Tubi TV, Fudu, Plex TV, Vimeo, and Ruqul. So it's a pretty big deal. While he was here, he interviewed myself as a former mayor. He interviewed our police chief. He interviewed Chief Kleck from HFD and several other people in our community. And they are having a film premiere for it on Saturday, July 15th, at 6:00 p.m. at Maryland Theater. And we would really love for you guys to attend. They filmed it all over the country, but I actually got to premiere it. And Hagerstown is about 65% to 70% of the video. And it really features our community and the great work that you guys do and that's being done by the Health Department and other addiction-related communities. So I'm just here to invite you. Obviously, your tickets are free. Please come. Please walk the red carpet. Please take all the pictures with us and celebrate the great things that your city is doing. And that's all. Also, Mayor, can you do something about the dirt bikes? I kid, I kid, I kid.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And before I move on, is there anyone else that is not signed up that would like to speak? Please say your name and address for the record.
Jessica Sooters, 311 Bethune Avenue, Hagerstown, Maryland. Just to reiterate what Kathy and Jerry and Pickles and Cherie has said. Like he said, I've witnessed the whole shooting each other up with heroin, calling the police, and watching them walk away, watching us get the attitude. This is, this is normal behavior that I look out my windows every day and see, every single day. I have a nine-year-old. I have a 16-year-old. My other two children are grown. My one grown child lives in the development as well. And I have two granddaughters, or grandson and a granddaughter that live there as well with my oldest daughter. And not all of us, not everybody in that neighborhood chooses to be in that neighborhood. Some of us, between our own poor choices that we've made along the years and things that were out of our control that we've been through, have led us to where we are. I never, in 42 years of my life, ever thought I'd live in Bethel Gardens. Maybe some people think that's stuck up of me, but I never did. I never saw that in my future as I was growing up. And I will admit that in the beginning, the first several years I was there, it wasn't like this. It wasn't like this at all. And I was on Henry Avenue then. I wasn't up on Bethune. Over the past two to three years, it has gotten every corner out my windows. I can't look out any of my windows without seeing drug activity, seeing them nodded out, seeing them laying on the sidewalks. My daughter's not allowed to play except for right in front of my porch. She doesn't have grass to play in. She can't go in the yard. Like, I have to be right there watching her. She can't go too far to the fence. I don't know what's going to happen on Bethel. I have no idea. I was at the bus stop last year, at my daughter's bus stop, my nine-year-old's bus stop. And I was, it's at the corner of Potomac and Bethel. And before the bus got there, we hear all this loud bang. I didn't pay any mind to it. It's normal, typical noise around there. And the girl across the street that was at the bus stop as well was like, they're down there effing shooting. I turn around, and I see them running, scattering, shooting across the street at each other. My daughter, I can't run. I can't go anywhere. I can't leave the corner. I don't know if they're going to run my way. I don't know if somebody's going to jump in a car and come my way. I have no idea what's going to happen because I can't leave because my daughter's getting ready to get off the bus. Like, it's ridiculous. I understand that I hear the police department tell us all the time they're understaffed. I get it. But in addition to the fact that we don't have enough help for this area, when the help does come, they have attitudes with the wrong ones. Because I've experienced that myself the past several times. I've had to call that police department. There are a few that are really amazing. There are a few amazing officers that I have encountered and dealt with. But there have been a few that have made me feel like complete trash for living there. And it's not my choice that I'm there. If I could afford $16,000 to $2,000 a month for rent as a single mom, I would. I go to work every day. I pay my bills. I don't break the law. I don't have a record. I've never been in trouble. My kids and myself, if I bust my butt to pay my bills and do right as a citizen, it's not fair that me and my kids have to look out our windows and see this, and nobody care because they don't have to live it. That's, and that's the bottom line. They don't live it so they don't, it doesn't affect them at all. But it affects the people there that don't want to be there. And all we want is some help to clean it up. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Ma Ruby Barnett? Please state your name and address for the record. Three minutes, Ma Ruby.
Yes. My name is Ruby Barnett. I live at 1612 Woodlands Run, Hagerstown, Maryland. I work at Bethel Gardens with Kathy Santiago. I've been there since 2008. And everything they say is going on, I have seen and witnessed. My thing that I want to speak about tonight and say, my concern is, I don't understand this law or this way that they tell us the law works. They can't make these people move from the sidewalk onto the streets. My house is here. I'll just say, it might be here. They're allowed to come and set their chairs right in front of my house and smoke weed, sell drugs, do anything they want. I can't even come out and sit there, and I live there. This is what I see in the community every day, every day, Monday through Friday. It goes on the weekends, too. So I just want the panel to think about that. How do we move these people? They get dropped off in the mornings at 10:00. It's like a job for them. And they don't care about people there. They just do their dirt. All we want is help. I don't know if we need security, if there's funding here for security. We just want them gone. You know, some of them are nice people. I've talked to them. But they come there and do something that we don't appreciate in our community. So that's my thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Approval of the minutes?
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the Mayor and Council meetings held on May 2nd, May 9th, May 16th, and May 23rd, all of 2023.
Second.
Discussion. Opposed? In favor? In favor? Motion carries. Consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Approval of an ordinance, add chapter 230 transient housing to the city code?
Madam Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council approve an ordinance to add chapter 230 transient housing to the code of the city of Hagerstown. This added chapter will, one, establish a licensing program for transient housing facilities, which includes hotels and motels, ends, bed and breakfast structures, and short-term rentals; two, enact license fees for transient housing facilities based on tier level for hotels, and license fees for bed and breakfast and short-term rentals; three, create a tier structure related to code violations per room ratio for hotels; four, establish joint inspection requirements for transient housing facilities; five, create ability to reclassify hotel tier after joint inspection; six, require training for transient housing owners, managers, and staff in human trafficking activities, human trafficking victims, and overdose response program; seven, create transient housing facility guest register requirements pertaining to transient visitors, letting any transient housing unit; eight, enact premises requirements prohibiting hourly rates and letting transient housing units for illegal purposes; nine, provide processes to deny, suspend, or revoke transient housing facility applications and licenses.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I am, as, as I stated when we introduced this ordinance, I'm voting no because of requirement number six. I do agree that managers and staff should be trained in human trafficking activities and human trafficking victims. I do not believe it's, it's their responsibility to undergo overdose response program training. I believe that the state of Maryland even does not require that in order to have a license become compliant to state code. So again, I'll be voting no only because of that one thing.
One more discussion? Those in favor? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Have approval of an ordinance amending chapter 232 vacant non-residential structures to enhance support to neighborhoods.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move the mayor and city council to approve an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown, chapter 232 vacant non-resident structures. Specifically, the amendments will add definitions for shell-conditioned space and vacant non-resident first-floor space; two, amend the definition of vacant non-residential structure to licensed mixed-use structures in the CCMU zoning district, having one or more vacant non-residential uses on the first floor; and three, amend the application license fee to provide further classification on blight determinations and providing property owners with the ability to be reclassified. These amendments are consistent with the city's vision and commitment to the housing in neighborhoods and community's city center plan.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Have approval of an ordinance amending chapter 233 vacant residential structures to enhance support to neighborhoods, to our neighborhoods.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown, chapter 233 vacant residential structures. Specifically, the amendments will, one, amend the application slash license fee to include an escalating fee for vacant non-blighted residential properties based on vacant time period; two, amend the application slash license fee to provide further clarification on blight determinations and providing property owners with the ability to be reclassified. These amendments are consistent with the city's vision and commitment for housing in neighborhoods and the community center, community cen, city center plan.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of an annexation resolution A-2023-01, the Bossdeter Group LLC.
Madam Mayor, I hereby, I hereby move that the mayor and council introduce an annexation resolution for annexation case number A-2023-01. The portion of property to be annexed is approximately eighty-one point fifty-five acres in size, and is intended to be added to and made part of the adjacent municipal lands with RMod zoning. The resolution package includes the meets and bounds description, annexation plat, and zoning exhibit as forwarded by the applicant's engineer. The resolution has been amended to include language restricting the development's density to not exceed fifty percent increase of allowed density in the existing county zoning.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Introduction of an ordinance to amend the, the code of the city of Hagerstown, amending chapter 60 vehicles and traffic by adding to section thirty-seven municipal lots a penalty for illegally parking in an, in an electric vehicle charging space; and two, modifying, modifying the schedule of fines at section fifty-one penalties.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move to introduce an ordinance to amend chapter 60 of city code to prohibit parking non-electric motor vehicles in spaces designated for charging of electric vehicles, and requiring operators to remove electric vehicles promptly upon obtaining a full charge; two, consolidating fines in chapter 60 in one location; and three, increasing the fine for parking in areas designated for work by city employees in performing construction, repair, or cleaning of city streets.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Approval of a resolution to rename alley number two dash one-two-one as Ralph Teeter Alley.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move the approval of a resolution to rename alley number two dash one-twenty-one as Ralph Teeter Alley in recognition of the achievements of the engineer and inventor who was a resident of Hagerstown, Indiana, a sister city to Hagerstown, Maryland.
Second.
Discussion.
Go Hagerstown, Indiana. If y'all haven't been there, you should go.
I'm going in August.
It's great, you should go. Get an alley name address.
Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of a resolution, parking lease for the Church Street parking lot with 122 North Potomac Street LLC.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move the approval of a resolution to enter into a parking lease agreement between the city of Hagerstown and 122 North Potomac Street LLC, a limited liability company of Maryland for the rental of one hundred parking spaces in the Church Street parking lot. The term of the lease is five years and commences on October 1st, 2023. The annual rent to be paid to the city is sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars and no cents.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Acceptance of street dedication, McLeary Hill Associates, I, LP.
Madam Mayor, move for the approval of a resolution to accept the offer of dedication from McLeary Hill Associates, LP, for Calsite Drive, Granite Drive, Gypsum Lane, and Nice Drive, an extension of Insurance Way, later to be named Insurance Way in the McLeary Hill Development.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Motion carries. Approval of a, a resolution, approval of a program year, approval of the program year 2023, city fiscal year 2024, CDVG Annual Action Plan.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the adoption of a resolution approving the program year 2023, city FY 2024 Annual Action Plan for Consolidated Development Block Grant Program, Community, sorry, authorizing the mayor to file an application for financial assistance with the US Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of seven-hundred-eighty-one-thousand-one-hundred-fifty-six dollars, and further authorizing the mayor to execute all of the documents relating to the city's Community Development Block Grant Program for program year 2023, city FY 2024.
Second. Discussion.
Just wanna thank staff for getting back to me and confirming that those certain businesses that will be operating in the new recreational cannabis law will not be eligible for this funding in the specified program area identified in the plan.
Those in favor? Opposed? Approval of resolution, fiscal year twenty-four, Community Legacy Fund Application.
Madam Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve a resolution indicating approval of the city's fiscal year 2024 Community Legacy Fund Application to the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. The application requests funding to assist with three projects. One, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for a program to bring storefronts up to shell-condition. Two, a hundred-thousand-dollar grant for adding additional lighting downtown. And three, a one-hundred-twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant for a weed-finding system for major attractions.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval, approval of fiscal year 2024 Invest Hagerstown Grant Program Funding Levels.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve the Invest Hagerstown Grants Program Funding Levels for fiscal year 2024 according to the attached chart. The pro, program includes five categories. One, the city center redevelopment grant program. Two, the citywide redevelopment grant program. Three, the home ownership grant program. Four, the rental property rehabilitation grant program. And five, the commercial sign facade grant program. Mayor and city council approve the city center redevelopment grant applications, and will approve the reuse of any uncommitted, undistributed, and/or forfeited commitments in the city center redevelopment grant category. Undisperced, I'm sorry. The program review committee approves the grant applications across the other categories, and will pre, the reuse of any uncommitted, undispersed, and/or forfeited commitments in all categories except the city center redevelopment grant category, with the ability to reuse such funds across any of those program components. Funding of this program will come from the Economic Redevelopment Fund, Invest Hagerstown Line Items, into fiscal year 2024 budget.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Chapter two-three-two, hmm, chapter two-three-two first-floor shell-conditioned space standards policy.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and city council approve the attached chapter 232 first-floor shell-conditioned space standards policy. This policy will establish standards for the first-floor vacant non-residential shell-conditioned space located in the, in the city center mixed-use zoning district related to the vacant non-residential structures program. That was a long sentence. This policy shall take effect on July 21st, 2023, to coincide with the effective date of amendments to chapter 232 vacant non-residential structures.
Second.
Discussion. That was a long sentence.
It was.
Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of elevator maintenance services contract.
Please, dear Lord, let us get our elevator fixed.
Are they gonna fix it before we read this?
July, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Madam Mayor, move the mayor and city council to authorize and approve the renewal of the elevator maintenance service contract with Oracle Elevator Holdco, Inc. This contract covers the repair, adjustment, emergency services, preventative maintenance, and inspection services for elevators located at various city buildings. Contract term is from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. This is year two of four optional one-year renewals. Total contract annual amount is twenty-one thousand three hundred dollars with the departmental breakdown below. There will be additional elevators added to this contract once construction is completed. The chart as included in the contract.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of inventory procurement funds.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of light division inventory procurement funds not to exceed an accumulated value of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars through fiscal year 2024, following the process described in the attachment memorandum.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of fiscal year twenty-three transfers for Hagerstown Field House.
Madam Mayor, I move for approval to transfer the following up 123 funds to the Hagerstown Field House project, reallocate two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from original first-third incentive grant program that was committed toward a future Class A office building that never happened. This funding source is general fund, fund balance reserves. Transfer seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from additional general fund interest revenue over current year budget estimates. The funding source is current year general fund transfer.
Discussion.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of a donation to the auxiliary unit.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of five-thousand-dollar donation to the auxiliary unit. These funds will help sustain and assist this volunteer organization in the day-to-day work they do for the city of Hagerstown. These funds will come from HPD's operating budget.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, if we could go back to unfinished business under D, approval of an annexation resolution for the Bossdeter Group. The motion, the verbiage in the motion stated that, and was read, "I hereby move that the mayor and council introduce," that should be approve an annexation. If we could have that read again with that correction made?
Okay.
And then have a revote on that?
Yep.
Please.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and council approve an annexation resolution for annexation case number A-2023-01. The portion of property to be annexed is approximately eighty-one point five-five acres in size, and is intended to be added to and made part of the adjacent municipal lands with RMod zoning. The resolution package includes the meets and bounds description, annexation plat, and zoning exhibit as forwarded by the applicant's engineer. The resolution has been amended to include language restricting the development's density to not exceed fifty percent increase of allowed density in the existing county zoning.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Being that we're off for the next two weeks, I'm not gonna go through and read everything going on because there is a ton of stuff going on the next two weeks. I just wanna mention, on Wednesday in University Plaza, there's a Summer Solstice Festival. It's a free event, artists inventors, and yoga instruction happening on the plaza. That'll start at five o'clock. The Downtown Happy Hour in Potomac Walk is this Thursday, four-thirty to six. And our Imagine Hagerstown event Friday night, June 23rd, starting at five, will be an opening act of Kaera, Kara Ware, and DuPont, DuPont Brass is the headliner. It's free, and like to see as many people down for that as we had for the Reagan years, starting out Imagine Hagerstown. And I would just lastly mention, fireworks will be Tuesday, July 4th, will begin around nine-thirty PM at Fairgrounds Park. And the rain date for that, should it rain, will be July 5th. That's it for me.
Councilman Schindler?
No comments tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman.
I just want to address the concerns of the Bethel Gardens community members. I'm pretty sure that everyone in this room was disappointed and sickened by all of that. No one needs to live or work around that kind of behavior. And I hope that there is something that can be done. And I hope, and I trust that HPD is doing all that they can, but my goodness, if there's an attitude of someone making someone feel less than by living in the neighborhood, then that kind of behavior needs to be corrected. And I am embarrassed that if that is the case. I walk through the downtown Hagerstown every morning and every evening, and while I don't live in Bethel Gardens, I see what they're talking about. I see it. And I can, we have so many social service organizations in this community, and it is time to step up. We can't do it alone, HPD can't do it alone, the residents can't do it alone, but something has to be done, because they're right. There's going to be more incidents, and there's going to be a child that gets hurt or murdered. And I don't want that kind of blood on my hands. And I don't know what needs done, or what kind of discussions need to happen, or who needs to be at the table, but... needs to be at the table, but I hope everyone is as upset and disappointed and struggling for answers like I am right now because that is not how people should live in their own homes. That's it.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the Bethel Gardens residents' concerns. As someone who grew up in that neighborhood for fifteen-plus years, I too see the difference of when I was living there as a child and how the crime and the violence was just not as apparent as you see today. And even having family that still lives in that area, I get it. And it is, it is very, very concerning, and it is disheartening knowing that someone like Ms. Pickles, who was there before, shoot, I don't know, maybe forty years. She's been there for a long time. She was actually one of my neighbors, and to hear her tonight, just stressed the importance of needing help, really touched my heart. So I am open to anything, any way we can help, even the neighborhood take-back program, like revisiting that, making sure we get some officers on the ground. That was really important to me growing up. We had a lot of officers on bikes, to the point that we knew every officer on the bike, and he used to give us rubber bands. And for whatever reason, we used to fling those rubber bands and pluck each other in the head, "Don't do that." I'm just saying. But those are the type of officers that we did have in that area growing up. They knew us. They knew when it was time for us to go home. They knew our parents, and they did not shy away from, "Say, I'm going to tell your mom if you don't get off this corner." So just having that community sense was big growing up, and I hate to see that it's not the case anymore. So I'm, again, open to any way we can get back to that. And one more thing. Earlier today, I was a part of a panel discussion at Meritus. Thank you, Mayor, for inviting me to participate at Meritus for what is, what does Juneteenth mean to me, along with Eric Rollins. It was a, it was a great one-hour discussion of Juneteenth holiday, and also just about black experiences, and it was a very safe space to share, and it was a good afternoon of just conversations with amongst the Meritus staff, so that's it. Thank you.
Councilmembers?
Well, first off, I'll be meeting with the mayor of Hagerstown, Indiana, this coming weekend. You guys are out gallivanting around Ocean City. I'll be here.
Get a sit.
I gotta have dinner on Saturday evening.
That's fun.
Look forward to seeing him again. There are a lot of things I want to say, and I mean a lot. Some are easy to hear, some are not. Chair, you talk about twenty-five years ago. I remember twenty-five years ago, all right? I was texting as these residents were speaking, hopefully nudging people in the right direction. Hopefully, we'll see some resolution of some things, but unfortunately, what it sounds like is that some of these people are dropped off at ten o'clock in the morning to hang out and, you know, sell their wares. They aren't the residents of that community. They aren't the kids who were growing up in that community. So I guarantee you, you'll see some, you'll see some progress, and hopefully, the community down there will embrace that progress. But yeah, I expect to see things happen very quickly. Thank you.
Sounds very nice, Sheriff.
Well, I mean, I think the bottom line, and I know the folks have left for the evening, and now that they made their comments, but I think the bottom line is everybody here heard it. Everybody at this table heard it loud and clear. And two things. One, I don't believe that government should operate in a manner of sort of addressing the squeaky wheel. Government just doesn't work well that way. And two, I don't think that HPD, or any of our departments frankly, operate in that manner. So we heard it loud and clear. I don't feel as though we are operating in a manner of simply addressing the squeaky wheel at the moment, that it happens to make sound. And that, as Bob alluded and others here have said, you know, the matter will be addressed. I know that the chief appeared to take leave and have some of that conversation. But the other thing that I would say as liaison to the Hagerstown Housing Authority is we have a number of entities, you know, in Hagerstown that operate residential development in this manner, and I would just make a suggestion that maybe Bethel Gardens folks, you know, maybe get with Hagerstown Housing Authority folks and some others and see, you know, what their experiences are that they're having currently, if they're similar, if there are things that they do in some of those other spaces that they could replicate at Bethel Gardens, maybe some of the things the Housing Authority does for, like Potomac Towers and other places to, you know, manage some of those issues that arise and see if they can, you know, gain some information and, you know, some ability to take action to help address some of the issues that are occurring. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you.
And I just want to comment also on that as well, the Bethel Gardens community. When I seen them come in, so many of them, I thought, wow, they're pretty fed up. And it just, as Councilwoman McIntyre, it's sad, and it's, it was very difficult for me, for the woman that spoke. I walked through that community, sometimes directly through, sometimes just down on the Jonathan Street side, at least two times a day, and I've never seen the woman that was in here. And it just saddened me to know that she lives in the community and she feels completely caged in. And it just, that was a lot. And I agree that, that we hope that they'll see some changes in the community down there. It was good to see the manager, along with residents, all in one accord. I think that the neighborhood take-back would be a great, maybe a great thing, maybe we do, like you guys did when you went to the Bester community, I feel like, or down with Mr. Stop's neighborhood. And maybe we go down into Bethel Gardens and see about that. But yeah, it was very sad, very heavy for me, especially with Ms. Pickles, who was the one that kind of lined us all up to be able to march through the neighborhood, and to see that she's, she's feeling that way about a community she's been very proud of. And so, yeah. And I also want to comment on Meritus Cultural Diversity Lunch and Learn. It was what does Juneteenth mean to us? And I shared that I didn't really all the way know, you know? And I think that we had, like Councilwoman Burnett said, we had a very safe space to kind of just talk about that, about not knowing really what it was growing up, and then kind of, you know, learning as we're teaching our children as well. But it was a very good lunch and learn. And I think that I spoke that cultivating spaces like that, where people can come in during their lunch break and hear from speakers, is what changes the game. And yeah, with that, we're adjourned.